Welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'll ask for Pastor Fair up here in the audience. Lead us in our prayer. And right from the prayer, we'll go right to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray together. God, we do thank you so much for today and the blessings of life that you've given us. God, we thank you for this time that you've called us here tonight. God, I now ask that you give a special blessing to these that have taken office now and will begin the business of the city of Northport. God, I pray for their leadership and God, just the wisdom that'll be coming from you, God, that you grant them discernment and vision for the future. God, now bless us all as we attend this meeting and God, travel home tonight. We ask all of us in Christ's name.
Commander. Attention, salute, pledge. I declare the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Swan, call roll please.
Councilman Hamright, here. Councilman Logan, here. Councilman Sullivan, here. Councilman Davis, here. Councilman Harrow, here. Both forms.
Thank you. The Honorable Mayor Donna Ehren has a presentation to present regarding our public safety. And after that, Mayor, if you would stay down at your post, I can... We have another presentation directly after that one.
Since 1976, the citizens of Northport have honored individuals that have gone the extra mile, contributing their time, energies, talents, and resources to build a quality, growing community. We recognize an individual as a citizen of Northport Citizen of the Year and in five other categories, one of which is the Northport Public Safety Leader of the Year. Every day, dedicated public safety professionals work tirelessly to ensure that Northport is a safe place to live, work, and enjoy life. Men and women who serve in law enforcement and within our fine emergency departments are often taken for granted, but these dedicated servants are always there when there is a need. Therefore, it is our privilege to honor one individual who reflects the services and commitment to all public safety professionals with the 2016 Northport Public Safety Leader Award. Our 2016 honorary serves as a firefighter and paramedic with Northport Fire and Rescue, routinely receiving constant feedback from citizens for going above and beyond the call of duty in his job performance. Our recipient exceeds his strong work ethic and a passion for the community. He is fluent in three languages and serves as a translator for many local and state agencies, including the Northport Fire Police Department and the Tuscaloosa County Sheriff's Department. Our honoree's latest endeavor is training to be the first firefighter combat challenge participant for the Northport Fire and Rescue. This demanding five event physical challenge brings together the best of the best to determine the fittest of the firefighters. Our recipient's dedication, dependability, and integrity is exemplary representative of the city of Northport. Please join me as we honor the 2016 Northport Public Safety Leadership Award winner, Mr. Manuel Jimenez.
I just want to say to everybody, thanks for coming out tonight. I don't know if you guys know my face on the news. I've been on the news a lot. I'm doing a marathon on December 3rd. I just want to say thank you to everybody that has donated to On St. Jude. It means a lot to me and it means a lot to the community too. So, I just want to say thank you for everything.
Here.
Got the Patel family right here, ladies and gentlemen. I'll ask if they come up.
The Patel family, Jay and Rashawn, they're actually owners of C-Mark Gas Station on 82 here in Northport. If you remember folks, a few months back, that Northport wanted to reactivate our Northport Fine Arts Initiative. And out of that, that initiative just reactivated and we had a lot of people supporting it. But the Patel families actually went above and beyond unsolicited. They came to city council and said, "Look, what can we do to help the children of Northport?" So, what they have done is for every gallon of gas that was sold at the C-Mark Gas Station, they donated one penny. So, those pennies started to add up. And from February to June, I guess?
Uh, July.
July. They actually raised a little over three grand. So, all 3100 bucks, I think?
Uh, yep, about 31.
Thirty-one and some change is going to go and split among five elementary schools to help with music and fine arts. So, you can pay for a little bit of music, a little bit of fine arts, and the resources and the teachers. So, again, I know Mayor, you probably knew coming on board, but these are these businesses, I think, that makes this fine arts initiative what it is, that adds value to it. So, again, we love to take money and... Yes, absolutely. You want to say anything, Patel?
Uh, no, we're okay. I think you've got a couple.
Hey, hey, we appreciate you. And again, folks, if you need to buy some gas, and I'm not just doing a shameless plug, but again, he's going to give a penny for every gallon of gas. And then that money's going right back to... How many elementary school students we got? Raise your hand, who in elementary school? One, two, three, got a few over in the back. If you do that, it actually helps our kids. So, again, this is a win-win and I'm just so glad that they came unsolicited to this city to say, "What can we do to help our children?" So, again, every elementary school will get that value of those 3100 dollars. So, again, Rashawn, thank you guys so much. And again, Mayor, we will take money.
We will.
Yes.
And I think this is just another way that we can partnership with the Department of Education to help not only the students in our city, but it helps our city.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Item five. Item five is approval of the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. In our pre-meet... pre-meeting, we had a rather lengthy one. Again, I'll make a motion to approve that agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, I would like to have an executive session to discuss the potential sale of city property and retail development at the end of the meeting. I would guess it takes about 30 minutes. It depends on how long you guys have been talking lately. And then we'll come back and we'll take no action tonight.
All right, thank you.
So, and I suggest, as we're customary to do at the very end of the meeting, in case this will have to go home and have to... But there will be no action taken, other than just adjournment.
Okay, thank you. What I'll do is I'll amend my motion to add item 12A... 12A2? 12A2 to the agenda for a proposed executive session to last no more than 30 minutes at the request of the Lea Department. Again, that's in the form of an amended motion. We had a second, of course, by Councilman Sullivan. Any further questions or comments or discussions? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President. Thank you. Item six, actually 6A. This gentleman needs no introduction, of course, but since he's in the audience, I will try my best. He hail from North Pole. His address is number one, North Pole, USA.
Oh, ho, ho! Merry Christmas!
State your name and address for that.
Merry Christmas! My name is Santa Claus and I live at the North Pole. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time tonight. Congratulations to the Patel family that has a great gesture and you definitely are on a nice gift. Tonight, I'm here on behalf of PARF to thank the city of Northport for their support in our programs throughout the city and helping make the lives of the Northport citizens a better... a better life, a better place to work, and a better place to play. Through our senior support, PARF this past year was able to win three awards through the Alabama Parks Association. One was being the Agency of the Year. The second one was having a Facility of the Year. And then the third one was having the indoor tennis facility of the year. So, three distinguished awards that the employees of PARF were able to win, and that's through the support from the city of Northport and the two other bodies that have supported PARF. The main reason I'm here tonight is to welcome each of you to the 41st Annual Christmas Parade, which will be held December the 5th in Tuscaloosa. We'll have a tree lighting ceremony in front of the courthouse at 5:15, and the parade will start at 6:30. And we'll be looking for each of you to either be a spectator or a participant in that parade. So, to help remind you that the parade is coming up, Santa has a little gift for you tonight. And congratulations to all the new faces I see this year. And just take this little gift and you can think about the upcoming Christmas parade. I know the reindeer were a little upset when we flew over today. They didn't see any green fields anywhere, a bunch of dirt. Stop over to go out and get some corn. Don't get into the toy budget. Rudolph needs his energy to get some back home. Hopefully, we'll get some rain in a couple of days. I'll talk to Mother Nature when I get back and see if she can help us out. So, excuse. Thank you. Anybody else would like a candy cane before Santa leaves? We still have those little smiling faces sitting over there. I know they would love one. Y'all been good this year? All right. All right, I got my eye on you. I'll be good. Anybody here? Merry Christmas and to all good night!
I just got word of Santa's from the South Pole and said, "Y'all." Did you? Thank you, Charles. Cleared that up. I couldn't hear that. He did say, "Y'all." Now, folks, we have Dr. Hayes Boyd. I saw him in the audience, I think. He's going to give us an update on the West Alabama Heritage Museum and the Sheraton Place Foundation. Dr. Boyd, thank you so much.
Thank you. Mayor, members of city council, Mr. Swan, Mr. Davis, and others. My report is going to be very brief, but I thought it would be nice for you to have a copy of what I'm going to say. Y'all have already received, I think, before this meeting, a... the official report from the West Alabama Heritage Learning Center, but I thought this would be helpful to you. I'll go through this very briefly. Item number one, every document, every historical document that came from Marvin Harper's collection is now housed in our museum at 911 Main Avenue. Now, that collection consists of 1,100 books, in excess of 1,000 files, letters, genealogy records, and other historical documents. Now, in those files, a file may have just one or two items in it. It may have as many as 30 or 40. So, you have an idea of the amount of information that we have there that was collected over a four-year period. Now, every single item, every single sheet has been reviewed and it has been entered into our computer system. And you will be able to go and look and see exactly where every item is, on what shelf it's held in the library, and in what file drawer it is. So, that was a five-year effort, but that is complete. Now, also, we have maps of... some very interesting maps of early 1820s, 1830s. We have maps of Northport in 1900 showing what stores were on what piece of property in downtown. So, it's just a wonderful collection of information there. We have scrapbooks. We have school reports, church records. The... On item four, we've had our open house, and I'm happy to say that many of y'all were there and you saw for yourself what we have. And that was a very successful event. Under item five, we will be opening to the public for research on the first Thursday in January, January the 9th... no, January the 6th. We will be open from 10:00 in the morning until 4:00 PM on Thursdays. As we progress, and if there's a need for additional days in the week, we will be open to meet whatever demand is there. I'm happy to say that we've already had three school groups tour the facility. They were given not only a tour, but a... two brief talks by members of our organization about history, local history here in town. In addition to what Marvin Harper had, we are adding other collections. Lackey Stevens' collection has been added, and there's something like 40,000 names that comes with his collection on genealogy records. Our website is www.westalabamaheritage.org. You can visit that. It's working. It's up now. Now, you will not see a whole lot on that website tonight. If you Google it here, you will find some things, but that's a work in progress and eventually, we will have all of this on our website. We are partnering with the Tuscaloosa County Preservation Society so that different organizations within the community know what the other organizations are doing, and that is very helpful for all of us. And in closing, I would just ask the support of the community, every time you have an opportunity to tell someone that we're down there, we would appreciate that. This is a new organization, so we need some publicity from word of mouth and that sort of thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Everybody's hard work on that. Will that be open during Dickens', Doctor?
It will be.
Okay.
It will be open on Dickens'.
Thank you.
Mr. President, if I could say, I believe Dr. Boyd is probably the hardest-working man in Northport. He almost... he and Lackey Stevens almost single-handedly have put this together. Of course, the board is helped, but Dr. Boyd is the driving force behind the organization and he needs to be a part of the many, many hours that he's put in on that board and pulling this information together. I know that Marvin Harper would be very happy with what you've done. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Item 8A1 under New Business is a first reading of an ordinance declaring the sales tax holiday or severe weather sales tax holiday. Mr. Davis, again, this is basically a first reading. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I'll offer that for a first reading for item 8A1. Item two has been deleted, ladies and gentlemen. Item 83... 8A3 is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conditional use approval for vehicle sales in a C-3 zone at 1507 Bridge Avenue. Mr. Stevens, again, tell us a little bit about this one.
Yes, sir. This is a request for conditional use for wholesale vehicle sales on Bridge Avenue. Mr. Harden's in the crowd. This is Mr. Jimmy Harden making this request. This was originally before the Planning Commission at their October meeting, and because of some of the council's scheduling, it's been delayed till this meeting. He did request the consideration of suspending rules adopting this tonight.
Mr. Harden's in the crowd. Mr. Harden, how you doing? Could you state your name and address, please?
Jimmy Harden. 3742 First Forest.
I know based on... I know, you know, we had a little thing called election last couple of few months ago, so we kind of backed you up a little bit. And I know exactly what a property, what you're referring to. How many cars would you say? And this is basically wholesale. This isn't a car lot, it's basically?
Yeah, basically wholesale. Just mostly mainly my office there and the garage to get my cars ready to take to the auction and resell them at the auction.
Would it be no more than... I know on the application, I think it's six. I think six or seven was cited on the application.
Yeah, that's about it.
Okay. And I think, Stevens, you were asking... I know the applicant's asking for a suspension of the rules based on some time since this stuff that he needs to do. So, I'll open the floor to see if someone wants to make a motion to suspend the rule so we can address, I know the first reading, but the second reading regarding Mr. Harden's request.
Move to suspend.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman... I'm sorry, making sure. Davis. Councilman Davis with the second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Mr. President, I would remind the council that to suspend the rule, you have to have unanimous consideration.
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President.
Thank you. Under suspension of the rules, again, is there a motion to approve the conditional use for vehicle sales in a C-3 zone located at 1507 Bridge Avenue? Again, favorable recommendation from the Planning and zoning.
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harrow. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Harden. Thank you. Item four is a first reading of an ordinance authorizing the conditional use approval to operate a group home at 1603 19th Street. It's currently zone RS-6. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, sir. This is a request from Ms. Joyce Gaines, I believe, is in the audience. She received a favorable recommendation from the November meeting of the Planning Commission.
All right, thank you. Ms. Gaines, I've looked at that application as well, and I... no need, I'll make a motion for a first reading on that one. And then we'll come back in two weeks and council will formally approve the actual conditional use. So, again, come back in about two weeks and should be okay. But I have read the application, I think, and talked to some of our neighbors in that area. I think everybody's pretty favorable with you as a business owner, and the only thing I will say is continue to be a good neighbor. Item five is a first reading of an ordinance annexing eight acres located at 4105 17th Street. Mr. Stevens?
Yes, so this is an acre parcel of land immediately adjacent to the west of the Quintown neighborhood, but accessed via 17th Street, just south of the railroad tracks. The reason for the request is water access. The city's already granted emergency water access, and this applicant has gone through the process. Planning Commission has given a favorable recommendation to annex it to the city.
All right. I'll make a motion for a... or excuse me, I'll offer that for a first reading on item five. 8B1 is a resolution, of course, declaring certain items and equipment as surplus and authorizing the proper disposal. Chief Marshall, these are items in your various firehouses that have restored useful life, and we just basically need to put these into our surplus process and authorize the proper disposal, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution awarding bid file 16-08 for stone and riprap. Again, ladies and gentlemen, you'll see this throughout tonight. Our Public Works Department has got some annual bids that they're going through, so we have to, by state code, go through each one individually. Again, this is for stone and riprap. The lowest bidder was Pierce Trucking, meeting the bid specifications again. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President.
Item three is a resolution to executing the copier agreement with advanced business machines. Again, this is a new lease agreement. Ms. Darnes, real quick, we're going to do a lease and then we'll do a surplus of the old, correct?
Yes, sir.
I'd say a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to execute the necessary agreements for the lease with advanced business machines, for the lease of a new copy machine for Public Works in the amount of $6,6756.75. Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President.
Item four, ladies and gentlemen, again, is declaring the old or busted piece of a copy equipment as surplus. Again, this is a motion to approve that resolution declaring that item surplus and authorizing the proper disposal.
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President.
Item five is a resolution declaring certain items as surplus and authorizing the proper disposal. Chief Foster, these are basically items out of our evidence room, and I can assure that, ladies and gentlemen, there is not a firearm in that evidence room. So, these are basically items that are just basically in the evidence room, need to be disposed of properly. Is there a motion to approve that resolution declaring these items surplus and authorizing the proper disposal through Chief Foster's office?
Move to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Motion carried, Mr. President.
Item six is a resolution authorizing renewal of a lease agreement for the Simitan Park property. Mr. Swan?
Yes, Mr. President. You have a memorandum in your packet. Basically, the Simitans have asked that you extend their lease for a period of 10 years. The lease is the same lease, basically, that they've had for the last probably 20 years. They have done an excellent job in helping maintain the park and making improvements to it, including a building, a paved walking trail. A lot of... they've lit the walking trail and they've... great the place. We're recommending that you approve the lease. Mr. Davis has included a section in the lease that allows either party to draft the lease after a 60-day notification.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution?
Move to approve.
Thank you. Before I get it out, leasing the Northport Simitan Park to the Northport Simitan Club Incorporated, that's a motion by Councilman Hamright. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Harrow. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Harrow?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item seven is a resolution awarding bid file one-six-zero-seven for drainage pipe. Ms. Starrns, I wanted to make sure that, in the form of a motion, I'll go ahead and make it, ladies and gentlemen. ADS pipe, the lowest responsible bidder was Ferguson, and the concrete pipe, lowest responsible bidder was Foley Products. Ladies and gentlemen, and mayor and council, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution awarding the bid file for drainage pipe. Bid file one-six-zero-seven to the bidder meeting these specifications and having the lowest unit price specified in attached bid tabulations and authorizing our city administrator to approve as needed any purchase requisitions. Drainage pipe using the unit prices from our said bid file. Again, ADS pipe goes to Ferguson, and concrete pipe will go to Foley Products. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item eight is a resolution awarding bid file one-six-zero-nine for automotive batteries. Ms. Starrns, again, Interstate Battery of Tuscaloosa was the lowest responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, and again, is that in the form of a motion? Floor is open.
Motion approved.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Davis. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item nine is a resolution awarding bid file one-six-one-zero for heavy-duty automotive supplies. Again, this is out of Public Works. The lowest responsible bidder is Saffron International, and again, I'll make this in the form of a motion to authorize our city administrator's office to approve as needed all purchase order requisitions for heavy-duty auto parts using the unit prices from the said bid file. Again, that was in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item ten is a resolution awarding the bid file one-six-one-one for light-duty automotive supplies. Again, out of Public Works, the lowest responsible bidder is North Port Auto Supply. I'll make that in form of a motion to award the lower bidder, which met all specifications, and authorizing our city administrator's office to approve as needed any necessary purchase requisitions for light-duty auto parts using the unit prices from the said bid file, of course. This is in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item eleven is a resolution awarding the bid file for miscellaneous automotive supplies. Again, the lowest responsible bidder, North Port Auto Supply in this case, I'll make a motion to approve that, that lowest responsible bidder meeting specs and authorizing our city administrator's office to approve as needed all purchase requisitions for the miscellaneous automotive parts using the unit prices from the said bid file. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item twelve is a resolution awarding bid file one-six-one-three for oil products. Again, out of Public Works, the lowest responsible bidder is W.H. Thomas Oil Company. I'll make a motion to approve that as the lowest responsible bidder meeting these specifications and authorizing our city administrator to approve as needed all purchase requisitions for oil products from the unit prices from the said bid file again to W.H. Thomas Oil Company. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item thirteen is a resolution awarding the bid file for the wastewater treatment plant or finished water pumping station improvements. Mr. Ingram?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, mayor, members of the council. On November second, we took bids for the water treatment plant, finished water pumping project. This project was, is part of the process of us beginning to do the rehab project on the Charlotte Shirley tank. The first step in this process was the fresh producing valve project we did early last year, and then towards the end of last year, we did some piping work, actually, hold the tank site itself. And during this process, we identified some redundancy issues we had in the pumping system for having the tank out of service for three to six months while we did the project. So this project takes care of those redundancy issues that we will have long-term operating the system. It should be the last step in moving forward with that next project. We received five proposals on this, this project, and those bids ranged from two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand to three-hundred-and-thirty-four-five. The, the low bid was two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand to J&amp;P Construction Company. As a point of reference as well, the engineer's estimate was four-hundred-and-twenty-two-thousand, roughly a savings of about one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand dollars, which with all of the bids being so close together, the two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand is not an outlier, so it is in line with the remaining bids. At this time, we're asking for approval of the bid of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand to J&amp;P Construction.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve that resolution awarding the bid for the water treatment plant, finished water pumping station in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-four-thousand dollars to the city administrator and execute any necessary documents as needed to proceed with the project. I'll make that in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item fourteen is a resolution authorizing the Friends of Historic North Port to open Shirley Place for Dickens Downtown. Mr. Swan?
Mr. President, we discussed in the pre-meeting, Friends has graciously agreed to open Shirley Place for the city this year during the Dickens Downtown celebration. Mr. Chuck Gerdow with Friends of Historic North Port is here. If you have any specific questions for him. But this resolution would authorize Friends to open Shirley Place for tours and allow them to decorate the grounds for Christmas. I understand that the Christmas tree is already up, is not, Ms. Starrns, it put the lights on. I thought she told me that in line to captivate. But they will open Shirley Place to give tours of the upstairs or the top floor, the bottom floor will be white clothes, but hopefully, detail will appear, but the top floor will be open next Christmas Eve. Recommend that you approve.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing the Friends of Historic North Port to open Shirley Place for tours of the top floor during Dickens Downtown?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item fifteen is a resolution authorizing the change order number two for the Midlay Road Improvement Project. Mr. Webb?
Yes, mayor, council. If y'all are aware, the Midlay Road Project is finally coming to completion. We still have one payment left and be just retained for holding the contractor. This change order before your night is a final quantity adjustment, and simply you have overruns and underruns throughout the project, but fortunately on this one, we end up with a deduction of two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the resolution for authorizing the approval of change order number two for the Midlay Road Improvement Project, which will result in a total price deduction of two-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents?
Motion approved.
That's a motion by Councilman Sullivan. Is there a second? I'll make that as more in the form of a second. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item sixteen is a resolution requesting the reimbursement of money spent by the city of North Port for the Midlay Road Improvement Project. Mr. Davis?
Yes, Mr. President. This would allow Mayor Aaron to present a request to the Road Commission at their next meeting, which is next Monday. There will be some other requests that probably be voted on at the December meeting of the Road Commission. This operates the mayor to make this request best in a formal manner with the commission, and the amounts are only exhibitated to the motion. Basically, we'll be asking the Road Commission to reimburse.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve that resolution, excuse me, authorizing the mayor to seek reimbursement of the Midlay Road Improvement expenditures from the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Hamright. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Item C is our consent agenda. We have twelve items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listings, travel and training for various employees, appeal requisitions, of course, regarding our water or wastewater utilities division, and we have two items that have been deleted, item four and item ten. Again, I'll make a motion to approve that consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Hogg. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Thank you. Item nine reports to special committees to council we have to report, although, Mr. Davis, if it pleases mayor and council, I think you, you mentioned in our pre-meeting that we discussed committee responsibilities and who, who will do what. Is that still requirement that we need to make this in the form of a motion? Is that...
Yes, sir. I think I would make a motion and put in the minutes the different committees and who, which council member, chair, I think co-chair, office of the mayor will be on each of the committees, and then the city administrator and the various department heads. Because I think this is also discussed at the meeting, that each committee chair will set the meeting, each committee will set their own meeting time, and the person will be notified.
Will be chaired by Councilman Sullivan, co-chair Councilman Logan. The projects committee, Councilman Davis, co-chaired by Councilman Hogg. The administration or the personnel committee will be chaired by Councilman Hamright, co-chaired by Councilman Davis. The business development or retail development, which deals with property and retail recruitment, will be chaired by Councilman Hogg, co-chair Councilman Logan. And the public safety, unless somebody has a little bit of heartburn, Councilman Hamright and Councilman Sullivan. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank my Councilman Davis. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
What's your care, Mr. President?
Thank you.
You'd be congratulated on being able to wave my hand, right?
Well, I, to be an engineer, and yet, I'm telling you. Item ten is public hearings, we have them to report tonight. Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Swan?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, as we discussed in our pre-meeting, uh, your counseling of December fifth falls on the night of the Christmas parade. Uh, it is standard practice for the council to, uh, reschedule that meeting. We are recommending that you have one meeting in December and only one, and that be on December twelfth.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the moving the December fifth meeting to December twelfth. Uh, times will still apply, five o'clock pre-meeting, six o'clock general public meeting or general meeting. Again, that's in the form of a motion, December twelfth, moving it from December fifth to December twelfth. Is there a second?
Mr. President, are you going to, uh, have a meeting on the eighteenth or are you going to omit that? I just, so I have clarification for, for everyone. We're just gonna have one meeting in December.
We will have one meeting in December, so we will omit the eighteenth, 'cause I think Santa just said, we gotta make sure everybody's only up and up. So we, we will omit December eighteenth, and we will move from December fifth to December twelfth, if that pleases Mayor and council. Uh, that was in the form of a motion, uh, time still apply, five o'clock pre-meeting, six o'clock, uh, general meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Hamright? Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
What's your carry, Mr. President?
Item twelve, departmental business out of our planning, uh, Mr. Stevens, you have a couple, couple items to, to address regarding our zoning board of adjustments.
Yes, sir. With Councilman Hogg's election to the city council, his seat was vacated on the board of adjustments, so that's a vacancy. Uh, the board of adjustments has five regular members and two supermemorated members, so, uh, it's the planning department's request that the council consider appointing, uh, members to fill the vacancies.
Right, thank you. Again, we, I know in our pre-meeting, Scott, we discussed, um, a few names and, and right now, we'll first go through reappointing, or excuse me, appointing someone to fill Councilman Hogg's term through twenty eighteen. So again, uh, is there a motion to appoint a name to fill the remainder of Councilman Hogg's term on the zoning board of adjustments through twenty eighteen? This is, this is a, a person to fill the, the term through twenty eighteen.
I move to appoint Jason Ward to fill the remainder of my term on the zoning board of adjustments.
Thank you. That's a motion by Councilman Hogg? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sullivan? Any questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Hogg?
Yes.
Councilman Sullivan?
Yes.
Councilman Hamright?
Yes.
Councilman Davis?
Yes.
President Logan?
Yes.
What's your carry, Mr. President?
I think, Mr. Stevens, we do have Mr. John Gardner and Ms. Susan Root, who has expressed an interest in continuing to serve on the ZVA.
Yes, sir.